And observance of his passing.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stand for Mr. Palmer. Thank you. Roll call please.
Lois Tiley?
Present.
Diane Dennis?
Here.
Christine Newman?
Here.
Richard Horner?
Here.
Michael Nuzzbe?
Present.
Kathy Harris?
Here.
And Sarah Tiley?
Here.
You have agenda before you. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
Your motion except the agenda as presented.
So much.
Supported?
I support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Announcements and public comments. Anyone have any announcements or public comments?
Yeah.
If you do, please step up to the microphone and introduce yourself.
I'm Greg Palmer, here to represent the family of my dad, Jim Palmer. We want to thank Chief Church for everything that she did the day that dad died. She was the first one there. And she really helped my mom make her coffee. Whatever my mom needed, she went above and beyond. She's actually been over there to check up on her. It's nice to see the community cop that's willing to go above and beyond for someone in this situation because it was totally unexpected that dad died. So, thanks Julie, appreciate it.
Thank you Greg.
Are you the new head of the, your brother?
My mother.
Okay. I wish him a lot of luck.
If he can keep on what dad was doing, he'll be okay.
He'll be fine, yep.
Thank you Julie.
No other announcements or public comments?
Yeah.
Oh, step right up here, young man.
Approximately a month ago.
Who are you?
My name's Paul Genderski.
Oh, hi.
I had a gentleman pull in my driveway and was addressing me for having my semi, my truck, which I use for my work to pay my bills, to pay my taxes. He said that he sent something to my mother's house where I parked the truck stating that there was a whatever it is, stating that it is an ordinance that you can't have a semi inside the Village Williams. It stemmed from something that happened over on the other side of town, who pointed a finger one way or another, and it ended up pointing a finger at me. I want to make a motion to amend that because it's not right. I can drive that anywhere. Any of you guys can drive your vehicles, as long as I don't have the trailer. It's not overweight vehicle. Yes, it weighs five million years, but it's not overweight. I mean, if he's got a problem, he could have called the DOT. I don't understand what's going on because there's other people that are still parking their semis in town. And nothing's being done about it. So, he sent one and he threatened to send another one, and then the third one, he was going to take me to court. So, I want to make a motion to amend this because it's not right. If it was one individual that was somebody who was having a problem with, it's not a problem with targeting that person, you know? If he's making a noise or disturbance or upsetting the neighborhood, give him a ticket. You know, why ding all of us? I mean, your groceries, everything on your shelves is not wheelbarreled in, it's not parachuted in. It comes in by trucks. That's how I pay my taxes. That's how I live. You know, and for him to tell me I can't even park the truck there is wrong. It wasn't disturbing anybody, it wasn't bothering anybody. He just did it because of your ordinance.
I believe that this would have to go first to the planning commission or to another commission.
Yeah.
And you have to bring it up to them. They're the ones that has to introduce any motions or anything.
Well, when is that?
You can't make a motion, so.
It's next Thursday at 6:00 PM right here.
What is it?
Next Thursday, 6:00 PM right here.
Six, six.
The planning commission, we're rewriting our ordinance policies.
Right now.
It has been discussed.
Yeah, there's people doing it. There's not even a block. I'm not mentioning any names or whatever. I don't want to drag somebody else.
Do you live there, Mr. Genderski?
As well?
Do you live there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, right, 510 East Bell.
Yeah, I know where it is.
Yeah, so.
We've had discussions on weight limits. We've had discussions on overnight versus during the day.
And I get it, I get it, you know? Like the one guy, I'm not going to mention any, parks up at Frank's. He's saying, well, that's not residential. He can park there. I'm like, okay, I mean, like, two blocks down the road, if it's not disturbing anybody, why are you here threatening me? You know? So, 6 o'clock on Thursday, huh?
Yep, next Thursday, the third Thursday of the month. And for the most part, everything is complaint based, and so we must have received some kind of complaint regarding your truck.
I know where it's coming from.
Okay.
Every time I started pointing fingers, all the finger got pointed at me.
That's funny how, that's kind of how it goes.
But it's still going on and nobody's doing nothing about it. So, it's like, you know, if you're going to do it for one, you do it for everybody. You don't just point your finger at a few of them and your buddies get to get away with it or whatever. That's wrong.
We understand, and I know Scott was out today looking for one semi that wasn't there, so.
Yeah, he probably works during the week and that's probably one of the weekends. And he parks it on the weekends. I say I'm not going to point any fingers, but I know what's going on.
Okay.
So, it's wrong, and I mean, if it's bothering somebody, ticket that person. So, don't ding all of us for one person being stupid, so.
Understandable.
Understood.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, let's move on to the Spicer Engineering Report.
Good evening. I believe you guys all had an engineer's report in your packet, correct? I'm going to go out in order because the Phase One Water Improvement Project, that's a pretty short summary. We met with Don, went through the project and our John Olson, myself and Neil. We hashed out some final details on the water main portion of it. We're moving into updating the preliminary estimates of cost as well as starting to quantify the miscellaneous quantities, including driveway, sidewalks, restoration, now that we kind of have a plan for the water main nailed down. Kind of where we left that is we are making the final touches on the water main, updating the preliminary estimates of cost. And we're going to meet again and see where we're at with the project to keep it moving forward with the RD application and utility review and whatnot. Were there any questions on that before I move into the asset management grant? Like I said, I think that was pretty straightforward, Don. I didn't miss anything. We, good meeting. We got quite a bit accomplished, and like I said, the water main portion of it is getting finalized. And then we're moving into the next portion, wrapping up the restoration quantities and updating the preliminary estimates of cost, so. The drinking water asset management grant, we, so the last month was a pretty busy month. We started with a pre-bid meeting, which we had 12 contractors asked. We had our bid opening, which we received six bids with a little bid of $93,932, I believe it was, from Underground Infrastructure Solutions, which their parent company is Pipe Tech. And Pipe Tech's a large company based out of Livonia. They do a lot of cleaning, televising, lining. We brought them in, interviewed them with Hart, Don, John Olson, myself. Comfortable with them moving forward. They have quite a bit of experience. Spicer Group has actually worked with them out of our Dundee office and had nothing but good things to say about them. They just opened an office up in Saginaw, so they are kind of locally established. And we met with their team, and it sounds like they're more than qualified to do the work, and they were the little bit. So, moving forward, we submitted a letter of recommendation for Pipe Tech at the meeting, which I believe you guys have in your packet as well. We're looking next week at a pre-construction meeting, tentatively Wednesday right now. And once we have the pre-construction meeting, we want to get notification out to residents that will be affected by the project. No major effects. We just want to let them know we're going to be verifying their water service and just some coordination and whatnot. We're looking to get those out next week as well. And then Pipe Tech's tentatively starting that following Monday, I believe that's the 21st, is that right? And they're looking at being.
The 21st of this month?
Yep. So, they're looking, and I think the project schedule they submitted was four weeks of the hydroexcavating the water services and then a week of restoration. We really emphasized the restoration, trying to keep the restoration to a minimum. And they were receptive of that and had no issues, and they're looking to do the same.
It sounds like they have pretty up-to-date technology and equipment that will minimize any damage done. They have the long, they can go across yards without actually not going over them, so.
Well, I read, I looked at the bids and I see where Eric Construction was the highest bid. Much higher, actually. But you're okay with this group? I've never, I'd never heard of them before.
Yeah, like, so we brought, we asked for their references and their equipment and financials and reviewed it, and we had no issues with it. And Spicer, like I said, Spicer Group, our Dundee office has worked with them and had nothing but.
Who down there is working with them? Bill?
Bill Becker, yes.
Bill Becker is working with them, so.
Now, this is just for the houses that were randomly picked to be looked at.
Correct.
Okay.
174 is correct, Hart.
174.
Okay.
You know, and a big thing we emphasize as well to them is the communication. And they, at least I thought they were very receptive and were more than willing to work with us.
Yeah, well, and I read, I think it was from the budget, I read, that people were notified at least a week ahead of time before they saw up in their front yard.
Yep, and we discussed with them and kind of given us a day-to-day plan. They're going to give us a nightly report on what they accomplished that day so that we can go out and we're going to knock doors and we have flyers to put on if we're not home and kind of give people heads up. And Don was, we were talking in that meeting that it's one thing to send out a flyer and say, hey, and we're going to be at your house coming up soon, and then a month later. I forgot that.
Yeah.
So, we're going to try to do it by day, kind of twice a week maybe, if not the week of.
Well, whatever we do, we fix.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep.
I think they'll be fine. I would be fine with that.
The footprint of this project should be very small. And they should just be digging two 12-inch diameter holes down to the water service to verify the materials. And, you know, again, we emphasize the watching where you're parking your equipment and, you know, where your store.
Especially this time of year.
Correct. And they were, like I said, they were very receptive of that as well because they don't want to tear everything up too, so.
And can I ask that you guys try to find a smaller print than this?
Yeah, yeah. I didn't magnify glass, so.
11 by 17 next time.
Did you see that?
Barely.
Okay.
I felt that.
I can print a couple larger copies and bring them out here.
Oh, no, that's okay. I read it, but it's pretty small.
That goes along with the hearing.
Print larger, talk louder.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, I don't know, were there any questions? I think we pretty much covered it. If there's any questions or comments, just get them to us. And we're planning on having a representative out on site every day, working with the contractor. And we've come up with a spreadsheet and where we're going to document and update the GIS with the water service material and working with Don on that, so.
That would be fun.
That's all good information.
Any information is good information.
Well, thank you guys.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
You can leave now if you want.
Thank you.
Okay, council minutes from the last meeting, or the February 9th meeting? Any questions on those? Any questions on the February 23rd meeting?
I have a question on the February 9th meeting. I have a question about the February 9th meeting. Yeah, Jason, Jason Mordich was here. Was anything more done with that? He addressed about the West Bell Avenue, was on West Bell Avenue, the problems on Water Street.
He addressed us about the problems on Water Street, West Water Street?
I can address that. I've had a conversation with Jason and his white vote. Even just today, ran into her again. We talked about a few options. One thing she asked about a reduction in the speed limit, which we can't do, 25 is 25. There's no, nothing. I don't think that's going to go any lower as far as that. We talked about the other issue there, is kind of the broken windows theory where the places, some of the houses there aren't maintaining the yards and stuff there. So, we're going to kind of address that. Often, people will treat an area how it looks. So, she felt like maybe that would be another opportunity to maybe get East Water cleaned up. It's a beautiful place. I've always called that little strip a little piece of heaven because you walk down there, you've got that albino duck that lives down there. It's a neat little place. They need to get it cleaned up and make it look a little bit nicer, and I think that's going to help. And then they said the problems aren't occurring right now. Really, they're looking preparatory toward the spring and the summer. Motorcycle gangs when they're in for big events. They've talked about specific things with me, so we'll kind of address those things individually. Unfortunately, you know, we can't be on Water Street all the time. So, you know, people are going to have to be aware of their speed and, you know, be accountable and make those choices. We don't, we don't, just, we don't control that, so. So, we did talk about a few of those things. I can give you more details specifically if you want, but.
I just want to make sure that his problem was addressed, you know, so.
Yeah.
Where does he live?
As much as we can.
John, um, please. Yeah, he's.
Up this way.
Is it?
On, on East Water.
Water, 200.
This way, up towards the.
East Water is going to be.
Other way.
It's West Water, isn't it?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay, West Water. Oh, yeah.
Listen, he's.
It is a white house.
That was just West Bell.
Yeah, it's the one after the green house.
Backs up to West Water, and he said he's had a problem with speeders.
Okay, is he, is he talking about in back of Kendall's?
Yes, that area there.
That's correct, the people's speed.
Is there anybody else except me that knows that Kendall's have that as a parking lot? As far as keeping things neat and tidy and up to.
Is that, that's the area you're talking about there?
Well, it's the housing, it's the housing on that street.
I don't think that's the area of it.
Okay. That looks pretty good, Don.
It's a little back further to like.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I know, okay.
Julie, I don't know whether the people, but the ones that have the basketball hoop on the middle of the road, could address that too.
Yeah, there are ones that.
You're talking about Wildings? Wildings with the woodpile in the yard. Well, there's a basketball hoop on the road.
Yeah, so we, we did talk about some of that as well, so.
I heard it was more towards that area.
Yeah, so we are addressing that as much as we can on our part. And then just kind of preparing some stuff, maybe as spring arrives and more people get out. And then if there's big events that may cause a problem on Water Street, then we can be more visual.
They did need a basketball hoop on the road.
Is he on Bell Avenue?
His address is Bell Avenue.
Okay. So, it's his backyard?
It's, yeah, it's, 121 West Bell.
Thank you Julie.
Oh, wait.
Anyone else have any questions on February 9th? Are there any questions on February, or, yeah, 23rd? Do I hear a motion to accept those minutes as presented?
I'll make a motion.
Support.
I'll support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Moving on to the commission and committee reports, the Downtown Development Authority minutes. Any questions on those? Are there any on the, any questions on the Parks and Recreation Committee, so the February 16th? Are there any questions on the Planning Commission minutes from February 21st? If there are no questions, do I hear a motion to accept and file those minutes, those three minutes?
I'm sorry, I have one question. This is the D, I'm sorry, I'm going, I'm on the DDA.
You got a question on that one?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Please, sorry. So, the board recommends council accept the letter of Kelly Cornford. Do we have to vote on that?
It's in here.
It's later on in the.
Okay.
I lived on here.
Well. It's on appointments. You're on there too.
Okay, yeah, I said that.
But we're back to the motion to accept and file those minutes.
I make a motion to accept and file these minutes.
Is there support for that?
Support.
Support by those? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Carry. Payment of claims. Anyone have any questions on the payment of claims?
No, I have a question on the Balance Street report. Neither have a lot of money. Is that because we didn't have a winner?
Well. That's, it's not a lot. We need more.
Well, I think it's a lot.
Needs more.
We always need more, but.
Always need more.
That's more, that's more than we normally have at the end of the year.
Yeah. It's been pretty, I'm not going to say it was slow, but.
Did we transfer anything to loco?
I did that at the beginning of the year.
Okay.
And we will again.
At the beginning of next year?
Correct.
Okay. That's all.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion to accept as presented?
I make a motion to accept the payment of claims in the amount of $76,126.07.
Support for that?
I'll support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion's carried. Moving on to new business. Truth and Taxation Public Hearing for the fiscal year of 2022 to '23. I need a motion to open, or to exit the open meeting.
Close this meeting and open the, to close this meeting and open the hearing. Yep. I make the motion.
Support.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Now do I hear a media, or a motion to open the public hearing?
I make a motion. I'll support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. The meeting in truth and tax protects the truth and taxation. Public hearing is now in session.
You know, I don't have anything on it, do you? We threw, we did, oh, at the end of the book, sorry. I'm not finding it. I'm looking for the truth and taxation.
Oh, it's not it. It's at the end.
No.
Very last page?
Uh-uh, that's the budget.
Resolution.
Adoption of the budget.
Did we miss it?
It's whatever you put in the paper.
The 12.8029 operating village, yeah, it's really tiny.
Really tiny?
Sorry.
Oh, I see it, okay. Attached is a permanent record which includes a 12.1. But it says it's attached and it's not. But it will be.
Yes.
Okay. So, it stayed the same, the 12 point, no. Yeah, 12.8029 and 2.1971.
Total of 15 mills.
Yep.
As well.
And the other one is the street village, right?
Correct.
Yep, village street village.
Is this like for the heavily thing, Hart?
Yes, that's what it does.
Yep.
Does anybody have any questions?
Anyone have any questions on?
The heavily amendment?
If you don't approve it, it goes down by a miniscule amount, is that the way it works?
Um, I don't know how much it goes down by. That's why we always do it.
But it goes down by something.
Yeah, that's how we ended up with 12.8029. It used to be 13.
Because you didn't do it.
We didn't do it the first year. I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay. All those in, most support?
Yep, she signed it.
Thank you, Lois. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Carry.
And then I make a.
Motion to, you don't make a motion to open?
Oh, somebody else can.
I'll make a motion.
Need a motion to open the public meeting?
The regular meeting.
I make a motion to reopen the original meeting.
Support.
Support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Carry.
We've met a couple times now on this budget. They say that a good budget can bring order to an uncertain world, and this is a good budget. It allows us to pay off the promises of the past and move towards the future while allowing us to upgrade not only buildings, parks, roads, infrastructure. Some of that is state grants, some of that is federal grants. It allows us to hopefully hire back a few part-time officers. If anyone has any questions on any line items we've discussed, please let me know. It does include some new equipment for the DPW, as we've also discussed. A 2022 Chevrolet 11500 Silverado, source well pricing. It includes the cable machine, the rigid case 7500, which will allow DPW to clean tough obstructions in our water and sewer mines of foreign size. It does add a modest 2% wage increase for all employees. One of the things that I'm most proud of and I keep banging the drum on the floor is the facade grant program downtown. People, I had the Lions Club meeting prior to this and still letting the state, the people of the state bank know to let your, anybody that comes in know that these funds are available. There are some areas downtown I'd like to see redone. We noticed that the, Dr. Dierre redid his without the funds, but that still looks nice. Subway did it without the funds, but there are a few buildings that, again, I imagine will be sold or go up to the land bank beginning on April 1, that will definitely participate in this. So, I think downtown could see some revitalization this year, which it desperately needs in some areas, so.
Are we doing anything with the facade?
The, the actual facade? It is my hope that it will be gone and as well the garage. Yes, that is my hope, and I have.
Does it sell?
Pardon?
Did it sell?
Not yet. It's supposed to go to the land bank and the person should get it probably for about less than a quarter on the dollar based on what was wanted, and that is my hope. And there are some plans for perhaps a park, something we could host downtown during hometown days. Maybe even like an Oktoberfest or a Holska Fest. Something we could host downtown during hometown days, maybe even like a Oktoberfest or a Holska Fest or, and maybe perhaps a banquet center, since the Kimberly Oaks isn't allowed. That might be an option. But I know there are a few people interested and offers have been made, so we shall see. But that, I do appreciate that and hope people understand that it is available. And I will keep telling people, go door to door and, hey, the library is taking advantage of us twice. Devil's took, take advantage of it. It is here for you and, and for all of us. There is a lot.
I liked your letter, by the way.
Thank you.
That was good.
There's more money here for the parks. We received a lot of requests. We're getting a lot more use of the parks. Ever since COVID, people wanted to be outside. And that was one way they could feel safe and be out. And, uh, Coal Miners Park is, is being used tremendously, whether it's Rebel Magnolia. We had the concert in the park. There's supposed to be an announcement hopefully tomorrow. From Alex Schofield might be returning, and we're looking at maybe partnering in the fall to bring more people into town with the concert. But, uh, it's not, not named yet, but, uh, we have the disc golf tournament coming on. We have Little League still here. So there are.
Easter egg hunt?
Easter egg hunt is due. Uh, we're, we're gonna meet Friday morning, seven thirty. Lori from State Bank, Victoria from Devil Woods, myself. And we're gonna kind of divvy up where in the park we're gonna put these eggs based on age groups. We're gonna have special basket with a special egg in every age group. And, uh, we'll do it on the Saturday before Palm Sunday and try to bring more people in. As soon as I start talking about, of course, you talk about something that pops up on your phone. I'm starting to see everywhere else that does it and kind of trying to steal ideas from them. And, uh, they're getting a lot of use, so the equipment will need some upgrading and updating and we'll keep doing that, so. Another thing I'm most proud of, and this is actually what I wrote my master's thesis on, is pension programs and underfunding. And so when I, as I mentioned in this letter, when I, when I got here, we were in delinquent status from the state and underfunded. And we had to submit a corrective action plan because we were fifty-nine point one percent funded. As of last year's evaluation, we're at sixty-six point three percent. And after this year, I believe we will be pretty close to seventy percent, which gets you out of the, the state off of your back. They don't send you letters and check up your status all the time. But, uh, the goal is to be one hundred percent funded by fiscal year evaluation year thirty, thirty-one, which once you get to one hundred percent.
Twenty thirty-one.
Yep, twenty thirty-one. Yep, sorry. Twenty thirty-one, thirty dash twenty thirty-one. We'll all be gone, buddy.
Yeah.
Some poor, some poor manager's gonna get all the credit.
Thirty-one.
That guy's gonna get credit for something good.
Or maybe sooner.
We have made changes, but once it gets to one hundred percent funded, you can look at different ways to, uh, a defined contribution versus a defined benefit. We've already taken care of the, um, kind of the capping and the different one point five multiplier versus the two versus the two point five. And so this is something I've always championed. I've been laughed at before. The last place I worked, they have twenty-four million in unfunded liabilities. And they, they laughed at me and said, well, this isn't Detroit. Nothing's gonna happen. Well, then the state made it, made an issue. And now they're, you know, not in receivership, but they're being closely watched. And I, as soon as I got here, I did not want that to happen. And day two, there's the email. I was like, whoa, did not know that. So I'm very proud of that as well. The big thing moving forward, as Mitchell talked about, is going to be phase one. We, the investment in infrastructure is the new pension problem. This is probably twenty twelve, we started talking about pensions and, you know, they cut retiree, retiree health and pensions at the state level. Started changing it to defined contribution 401Ks. Well, the, the thing that we didn't talk about then, or just start talking about were roads and infrastructure. We talk about roads because you see them, but you don't talk about what's underneath the road. And so the plan is to get these water mains, these, these lead lines. It is an unfunded mandate sadly, and we have to do something by twenty twenty-five. I imagine they will give us an extension statewide, but Flint really, really brought an eye to it. And then, um, meeting with Don and Tito and Jason and, and Mitch and John and Neil. It's, it's becoming our, our passion. Having people feel safe, knowing that their drinking water is clean. It's a, it's a big mission. It's a huge undertaking. It's going to cost millions of dollars. But I think this budget lays the foundation so that we can afford to make the changes. We can pay off our loans, pay off our debts and move forward. So if you have any questions or any comments about this budget, I'd be happy to go through it with you.
We don't have many debts or, only to ourselves.
We're, we're gonna have more, but not yet.
We will, but we don't.
And I was telling Don last week when we met with Spicer that, you know, two, two point two five in this economy, two, this is talking millions of dollars, doesn't go very far. It really doesn't. And so, uh, he was happy to hear me say the three million dollar word. He's hard. I think I could work with that. And of course you can, Don. But it's something.
You get, you get looking at a project like that, it's just like, you know it's gonna be expensive. It's like.
It has to be.
You know? We sure love to accomplish the whole thing, cause I mean, if we, if we as a, you as a council and we can get that accomplished.
Well, if, if you've been here long enough, you'd know that when we put the water system in, we paid six dollars a foot.
Oh, my gosh.
Six dollars a foot. And then I went out for that bid for the people, um, I think I wrote it further. It was already up to twenty-six dollars a foot. And that was, that had to be ten, fifteen years ago. So I can't imagine what it costs now.
What year was it? Six dollars a foot?
That would have been sixties. Early sixties?
Late fifties.
When everybody put it in at the same time, it was six dollars and four cents a foot.
That's, did they assess the per foot of frontage of the property there?
Per foot of frontage. And if you had a corner lot, you had to pay for the longest lot.
Yeah, that was the old way they used to do it.
Yeah, and we're.
And they put it all in at one time. So, yeah.
Well, I get complaints about roads and alleys and, and I know, I know they're bad. I drive over them myself, but not try to, well, that's part of phase one. If we can get everything out of there, cause I don't wanna replace the road.
No.
And then twenty twenty-four, dig it up, change everything, then put new road back. But it, the patience is going to be hard. But we bonded for five million dollars, thinking we could do phase one and phase two. And now we're looking like that five million might be just phase one. And that's reality, and I don't love it. But I'd feel better knowing that they're not coming out at three in the morning for a water main break. Because most of the materials are from the nineteen forties. So I'd like to.
Well, no, it's not all, it's not all brand new in the sixties.
Most of.
Most of it.
Most of the, we will be replacing as thirty-nine or older.
Yeah.
Nineteen thirty-four.
They should do the into the house ones.
Yep. We have. So that's eighty years plus.
And we are looking at all the grants and loans we can go after, especially for roads and sidewalks. And I'll talk a little bit about that.
I, I appreciate you going after like a kid. All weekend, we got so much to do.
There's no such thing as free money, but it, it feels better when it comes with the state of Michigan's name on it. Even though we are, we all sent it there, but still.
Feels a little bit better that they owed it.
Any further questions? Or comments? If I could make two sentences, talking about infrastructure and roads. Has anybody drove down Walnut Street, twenty-five mile an hour if you can go that fast? I mean, that represents us as, as a town and as a school. And anybody that comes into town from north or east, west, they come down that road. That St. Charles, like really? I mean, that's terrible. That road is crap. It's bad, so.
I'm sure it's gonna go bad in the next six weeks.
It's, it's all the sewer trenches right now. Sure it's even because of.
That was another one. We put a brand new road down and then people build houses and we had to cut them open to put sewers.
I get it. I get it. But I'm just saying, I mean, that, that represents a trouble. They thought the schools come in for just this regional or whatever. I mean, that's just like, this is St. Charles. About giving the dirt road. Isn't it? There's a lot of work to be done on it.
And I'll speak to Walnut and the Safe Roots School.
Okay. So back to the budget. Yep, back to the budget. Back to the budget.
Get back to the budget here and. Any other questions on the budget?
You know, we do, we still are going to look at replacing sidewalks and, and providing new trees and areas and, and cutting down dead ones and sprucing up downtown. I, I'll go after the KMB, the Keep Michigan Beautiful Grant again and see if we can keep a, a good rapport with them where maybe they're paying for our trees for the most part. I do know that, uh, the parks budgets in the past have been minimal, the donations from others. I believe last year the township gave us two hundred and fifty dollars, but they have a new supervisor. I don't know if you heard. And they have dedicated a thousand dollars towards our parks. And I believe there's a stipulation or, or, uh, the St. Charles Township. And their new supervisor had really pushed for it.
I abstain from that vote.
Yes, you? And, and so, uh, the thought is that a couple trees from them as well would be, go along with our. So.
So, okay, I'm, I'm ready to make a motion, but I have a, um, question on the resolution numbers. The resolution to amend the budget is twenty-two point three in the book and has twenty-two point two on the sheet. I'm assuming twenty-two point three is the correct number? I'll make a motion to amend the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two fiscal year budget, resolution number twenty-two dash three.
I'll support.
Roll call?
Lois Tiley?
Yes.
Diane Dennis?
Yes.
Christine Newman?
Yes.
Richard Horner?
Yes.
Michael Nesbit?
Yes.
Kathy Harris?
Yes.
And Sarah Tylee? Yes.
Motion carried. I need a motion for the, uh, resolution twenty-two dash four.
I make a motion to read that resolution twenty-two dash four, General Protrusions Act to adopt in the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three fiscal year budget.
Seconded.
Seconded. Roll call, please.
Lois Tiley?
Yes.
Diane Dennis?
Yes.
Christine Newman?
Yes.
Richard Horner?
Yes.
Michael Nesbit?
Yes.
Kathy Harris?
Yes.
And Sarah Tylee? Yes.
And then, moving on to the two thousand nineteen to twenty and the twenty, two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five capital improvement plan update. Your motion be updated. Your motion to approve that.
The only changes in here would be the DPW pickup truck and the, and the K seventy-five hundred, as well as discussion zone, phase one. And the DWAM, the state funds that we received. Every time I bring this up, I, I probably shouldn't tell the story, but the planning commission, there's a member in the planning commission that's really happy that we took out the twenty-five thousand dollar kitchen remodel. And every time I, I open this, I think about, you know, government spending and, and trying to be prudent and fiscally responsible. We do just fine with the, uh, with the kitchen we have. Looking, looking to the future, we do have, we do budget for new body cameras for the police. We're gonna have to look at new tasers as well.
And the vehicle, if we ever get it.
I, we did hear today on the dump truck that we ordered last budget year, that it's supposed to be April.
Built April eleventh.
Oh.
With the possibility. Close. With the possibility of showing up for, to be outfitted sometime in May.
May.
Hey, that's better than what we have.
That's right. We didn't get it at all last year.
No.
Diane, you can use a fresh pickup.
I'm set for over that. I mean, do, uh, the motion?
April, April and November. We'll see. Depends on the mildness.
There's someone with mine already.
I did get a call about that.
Yeah.
Need a motion for the update?
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the updated capital improvement plan from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five.
I'll second.
Court, thank you. Roll call, please.
Lois Tiley?
Yes.
Diane Dennis?
Yes.
Christine Newman?
Yes.
Richard Horner?
Yes.
Michael Nesbit?
Yes.
Kathy Harris?
Yes.
And Sarah Tylee? Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you for that. Moving on to item E. Point Kathy Harris to the Parks and Recreation Committee.
We, uh, we have one vacancy that has been open for a year and a half, two years now. We filled last year with Paul from the Little League to bring in a voice so that they're not demanding things and more of with us the entire way. Kathy expressed interest and I, I think she'd do a fine job.
I think she would too. Now, do you wanna, um, do all of the reappointments and include the new ones, or do you want them separate? Okay. I make a motion, we appoint Kathy Harris to the Parks and Recreation Committee.
I'll support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry?
You do a good job.
Moving on to F. Replacement for the chairperson, for the, the chairperson, for the DDA. Do we have any?
We just have the letter from Kelly Cornford and the letter from Regina Smith. The DDA thought with Kelly's experience at Union Court. And, I mean, she's stretched pretty thin with the, she's a big part of the Athletic Association as well, but they thought that brings more to the DDA. And, uh, they recommended her with the idea of Regina. Uh, and I believe we, we might be receiving another letter from someone very soon. The manager of the State Bank actually reached out today, uh, hoping to, the next opening to get on. So, uh, that board, uh, seems to be doing well and, uh.
They're very active. They have money.
They have money and ideas. And I like that. And I need to spend more than money.
So we need a motion for appointing.
Kelly Corn.
Got it. Yeah.
I make a motion, we appoint Kelly Cornford to the DDA, DDA?
I'll support.
Support? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to reappointments.
I supplied a list of people that need reappointment beginning in April. I apologize if that was omitted from your packets.
Can we do them all at one time?
Yes. Everybody here has expressed the want to, to fulfill the role and to complete the work, especially on the planning commission.
Okay.
Need a motion for appointment of those people?
I make a motion that we appoint Sue Beer, Karen Wood, Joe Klein and Pam Dendersky to the DDA. Richard Christian and Jay Gardner to Parks and Rec. Steve Paulus, Adrian Savini and Bill Wood to the planning commission.
Support for that motion?
I'll support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. People will be reappointed. Moving on, Safe Roots to Schools.
So I will do this in two sections. Uh, one kind of to address the Wal, Walnut Street issue. But first, we are under this umbrella of the ten thousand dollar grant that we received a year and a half ago, two years now. And I need permission, as approved or recommended by the Parks Board, uh, to build a sensory trail in Coal Miners Park. Now, I've supplied information of kind of what a sensory trail is. It's a series of experiences along a route that kids can touch, see, um, learn about. And I supplied a, a picture of what we would like to put up, maybe eight to ten signs. a, a picture of what we would like to put up, maybe eight to ten signs. And the idea and the premise now is, um, kind of to make it about the history of St. Charles where uh, I have four books from the library. We have, uh, Mr. Palmer's, all of his laborous work from the past. Uh, where we could start off telling the story of lumber and, you know, show kids what what bark feels like or a tree and, and how we were gonna be the next Chicago and shipping the, the lumber up to Saginaw and uh, that would be the first story. Maybe the next year we talk about the process of oaring and mining coal where they could see from beginning to end and, uh, that would be put on me, but, uh, Safe Roots to Schools is has four thousand dollars for us to buy, purchase, and put this together that they'd like to use. So this is part of the ten thousand dollars that we're, we are using to go after, when I first started, it was sixty thousand dollars. We have since learned that you can get two hundred and twenty thousand dollars per school. And contrary to what was in the Tri-County News, we do not have it already. Um, I found that we don't even have the application started yet. But in order to get a job, you have to say a lot and, say a lot of things, I suppose. Uh, but the goal being six hundred and sixty thousand dollars to redo Walnut Street, to put in sidewalks, to, uh, put in curbs, to whether we need stoplights, whether we need, um, separate paths, all things that they would pay for.
Who? They who?
The Safe Roots to Schools.
Really?
Yes. Um, right now, the next thing after, if we can get approval for the sensory trail, we will do another walking audit. And, uh, one of the tasks we're given, we did, gave out zero names, just addresses about where kids live to see if it's even feasible for them to walk or bike to school. But Walnut Street is a mess. Not only is it in terrible shape, but it's unsafe for kids, especially in the winter when it's dark, they're walking along the road, it's icy and cars do not go twenty-five all the time down that road, if ever.
And they can't see them.
They cannot see them. And you have one buddy who jokes around and pushes you and it could be catastrophic. So, that is the goal. Um, we actually ju- um, Adam Jenks is the gentleman's name, and he actually works for Safe Roots to School. And he joined our last meeting uh, with Tina Swanton from Michigan Health Alliance and myself and Josh Miller from the Saginaw ISD. And they're looking for a pilot location to work on these new Safe Roots to School endeavors and I'm pushing very hard that we are perfect, a perfect fit for you. We're just small enough so you can work out all the kinks, but we're just big enough that you'll see with, if it works or not.
And all our kids are in one spot.
Yes. And I think that, uh, he liked the idea and the hope is that we become the pilot for the six hundred and sixty thousand dollar grant. So, uh, hopefully it's sooner rather than later, but, but it is. That will, yep, that will be the kind of.
Only it'll be our own.
Yep. And they will be replaceable.
I was gonna say, you know, you can recycle those after three or four years, put the first one back up again.
Yep.
Cause it'd be on the kids again.
Okay, so every year it would be something different?
For a while.
Yeah. It's one of those things where it gets stale. We, we tried the, you know, the reading in the park this past summer with kind of like the putting, putting the political science and it just wasn't strong enough and it wasn't changed out enough for some. So, something a little bit more sturdy with their money, again, for our parks and that's you've noticed, we're doing a lot with our parks with other people's money and that's how I prefer it. But, so we're working on the data for transportation. Uh, we're, we're got, we have to do some surveys at school. Um, students' behavior, parents' w- willingness to participate. Uh, we're gonna identify logical routes. And we have to get our action plan together, but we can put in crossings, we can do sidewalks, separate paths, transportation. Uh, there are different ver- variations of the Safe Roots to School. Some require twenty percent local match, but with Adam on our side right now, it'd be zero percent match and we're under his umbrella. So, uh, for right, that's a lot, I said a lot. I hope it wasn't too much, but the goal now, or what I'm asking for now is approval to put up sensory trail in Coal Miners Park. Using funds from the Safe Roots to Schools.
What are you gonna do with the rest of the funds?
Don't know yet. We're trying to find ways to u- use them all and show them that we're, we're doing it.
So we don't have the ten thousand dollars yet?
We're, we're, we're using it slowly but surely. We haven't really used much of it yet. That's why I think the four thousand, if we buy these nice signs, that they'll add up, especially right now, cost-wise.
I'll make a motion that we put in a sensory trail, using the funds from the
Support. And again, I hope to apply for those funds February twenty-twenty-three.
For the discussion on that issue? Moving on.
You did, you did a motion already, so you need to do all in favor.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
I know.
All right. Moving on to accepting the hydro evacuation, evac- excavation bid.
So this, uh, well, this would be to accept the bid, the bid from Underground Infrastructure Services, uh, sister company to Pipe Tech uh, in the amount of ninety-three thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars. As, uh, Mitch stated, we did interview them, we did approve of what they said, we went through their references. Their equipment is nice, new, uh, fancy. Um, some of these other companies have older equipment or just new to the hy- hydro excavating. They actually saw that how much the state is willing to give out and I think they went out and bought some equipment, um, maybe not so sure on how to use it or what to bid on it with, but, uh, that, we budgeted, and I say we, Spicer, Don and myself, a hundred and thirty thousand five hundred dollars for this bid. So they came in thirty-six thousand under, thirty-six five under. Of course, there's gonna be some probably contract change orders or a little bit of, hey, change of scope here because of it's too close to the house or something along those lines, but that still gives us wiggle room. And so I think they're a good company. I looked them up, a couple of the guys on LinkedIn and we went to college together. I, I didn't know, I don't know them personally, but one guy went to state at the same time and the other guy lives, uh, next to my best friend in Northville. And so, I kinda wanna go interview them a little bit more, but, uh, they seem like really good guys with a really good company and they have their stuff together, so. I think it's a, a good safe bid and Spicer, like, like he said, down in Dundee does a lot of work with them, so.
Do you have a discussion, questions? Motion?
I make a motion that we accept the bid of ninety-three thousand nine hundred and thirty-two dollars to do the, uh, hydro excavation work from Water Services?
Underwaters.
Is that the name?
Support?
I'll support.
Underground.
Roll call?
Lois Tiley?
Yes.
Diane Dennis?
Yes.
Christine Newman?
Yes.
Richard Horner?
Yes.
Michael Nesbit?
Yes.
Kathy Harris?
Yes.
And Sarah Tylee?
Yes.
Motion carried. Moving on to the reports. DPW report. Anything you want to tell us?
It was a busy couple of weeks, I guess, I could say. Uh, we had three pretty good water main breaks within a week period. Uh, same, same day we had a good rain, uh, flood pumps got a good exercising and our sanitary sewer plugged up, so. We survived them all and we're plugging away, but hopefully it looks like the majority of the frost is out of the valley, so hopefully we're through the worst of that. Looking to get through winter and and, uh, like Mitch said, coming up, our goal, uh, the next couple of weeks, we're actually gonna take those prints home, look at every single house to verify where the services are to try to get.
A hundred and some halfs?
The, for the water main, I'm planning out the hydro.
Okay.
To make sure they're as accurate as possible so they can get the final plans drawn up and you can get moving forward on this water main project.
Okay.
So we're not holding anything up, so. That's the plan, so any questions, comments, or concerns?
The lift station pumps got plugged with rags, not mops?
Whatever you wanna call it.
Okay.
Make sure of everything. I, I think it's mostly adult wipes, my personal feeling.
Oh, okay.
Those flushable wipes that they say are flushable, but they're really not. They're promoted as such.
But they're not.
Anybody else have any questions, Don?
No, and I appreciate you guys. When you get busy two weeks like that, we really appreciate what you guys do. We really do.
We do what we can, you know, they, they, they don't complain. We, they do it. We gotta do it pretty well.
Yes, yes.
None of us wants to be there, but we do.
You go anyway, huh?
You gotta do what you gotta do.
Well, thank you anyways.
We appreciate your support, so.
Move on to the Police Department report.
I think she just stopped talking. Yep, yeah, I don't know if she got a call, but.
Do you have any questions? We'll have to delay him, of course.
You're up. Yeah, I'll do my, I'm sorry, isn't that a traffic staff that gave me a quick call, so. Um, I don't have anything, um, questions. I'm sorry.
I'd point to last, uh, the Thursday's event here, three o'clock.
Yeah.
I would just talk about it. I know she was, most of it, but.
Sure. Um, yep. Oh, I was delighted, um, Jim came from the Tri-County Review and, and had a conversation. Um, I called up, had a conversation with their, um, a a gentleman that we're hopefully gonna be hiring part-time here shortly, um, got us in contact with, uh, some trooper friends of his and we find that in law enforcement, we're kind of a family and sometimes that's good. Like, cause everybody's brother and sister and sometimes, you know, there's differences, but, um, this is an excellent opportunity, um, this, um, contact, we just kind of formed this bond and next thing I know, they're like, what do you guys need? What do you need for caring for your community and caring for your officers? And, uh, our night guys are gonna need flashlights, good ones, cause they die so quick, it's crazy. Um, and then any opportunity, I'll tell you what, I think I, I'm selling hard. I think I've used my AED like four times in the last three weeks or something. It's been, it's been a busy medical, medical month and that second AED was gonna be just, um, great for us to have one in each vehicle. So they brought us, um, an AED and, uh, I just loved it. They cared for the hearts of my village. I thought that was pretty cool. And then they brought us the flashlights, which is a matter of safety for my officers. So, um, just out of that, you know, um, relationship with other law enforcement depart- departments and since then I've had a couple of other departments reach out to me and I've been able to get them in contact with the Steel Patriots as well and they're sending off more equipment to help other departments. So, um, what's her name? Barb came down and, or came up and, uh, brought that on Thursday and, and we put it in the paper and her and I went to we saw you over at, uh, we went to dinner and just kinda talked about a lot of neat stuff and, uh, law enforcement experiences and kind of life. So, um, great opportunity to build relationships, um, that only betters our department and, uh, kind of prepares us for what's next, so we're thankful and that was Thursday, so.
Well, I, I'd like to say thank you to Julie, cause she really helped me in a really awkward situation and, uh, I sure was happy she was there. So, it's great to have someone around that can do stuff for you.
She was a big help too when my brother passed.
That means an awful lot. It means an awful lot when you got somebody that cares.
Well, it is, um, absolutely a privilege. I do care and I do care about, honestly, I said the AED, it's the heart of my, of, of the people that live here that they wanted to, um, touch and that, that's important to me. Um, just that medical background for me too is another part. I'm, I'm re-upping that again this month and, and taking care of that. Uh, it just, it's another way to serve. I think I put it in there. It's just one way that we don't just do law enforcement, we do community pleasing.
And she gets there way before the ambulance.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
And the village active complaint log. Okay, then you wanna add to your summation?
Well, um, January came in for good with permits and then February just died out. Absolutely no permits came in. I have had several come out since March started, um, and then, uh, two of my plants were resolved. One of them, uh, is actually up for sale. I believe that's why it got cleaned. Uh, some materials were removed. And I did get in a couple more complaints about heavy vehicles today, parking overnight. And I'll be looking into that this afternoon or tonight when I leave here. Check out those. That's all I have. Any questions?
Questions, Scott?
No, your list got very short. Your list got very short.
Yes.
Check out a vehicle for somebody complaining about, or you're just doing it?
What's that?
Check out a vehicle for somebody complaining or are you doing it just because they're there?
I do it because there was a complaint. We, it's a complaint basis only, so I don't have a complaint. I, I don't judge it.
That's basically the way we do it, is by complaint only.
Yep.
Any other questions? Get motion to file our reports?
I make a motion. She's done. I'll make a motion.
I can't hear you.
I'll support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any public comments above and beyond?
Well, yeah. I'm not sure what his name is.
My name's Hart.
Hart, Mr. Hart. You bring up the trees thing. I was bringing that up earlier, back when I was younger. DNR and, I remember D over here, he used to take us down to the state land, cut up all the dead trees, they'd mark them. People wanted the wood, for wood, probably good time. Right now, the price of gas and everything going up, all along down by the I know the state, I used to work for the roads, I know the state probably owned a lot of that, which is the old tracks or whatever goes all the way to just being that's light down there. That's terrible. Right by the haunted house, I think it's, it's it's kind of built up where you can have havoc with younger people, especially with the, the haunted house being down there. Get a volunteer group down, offer the wood to people, mark the trees, cut them down. I mean, even volunteer to help the village to, to loosen up our budget a little bit, to get these guys on other things. It's a great idea, you know, and as far as the sidewalk thing, I, I agree with what you're saying over on Walnut Street, but what makes that sidewalk any better than these? Cause when I was a kid, I wouldn't walk up Walnut Street to walk back to Water Street. If I left the elementary school, I'm walking this way. You know, it, it, it's no different than, than Walnut Streets, you're gonna do one, should think about doing the other one.
Yep, uh, a- any route to, to the schools.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If you're saying just Walnut Street.
But there is no sidewalk.
They don't have sidewalks and that's why I referenced it. Walnut.
Walnut.
They walk in the road.
There's some going down.
There's some, but then it goes in the road and there's a white, white piece of paint that separates the kid from the cars. And so that's why I.
I thought you were talking about up by the school and that. Are they gonna put a guardrail or something up there? Cause the kid got pushed or something.
Certainly possible. I'd like to see sidewalks there, but it, it encompasses any route to the school.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the hydro thing was. I don't know what that involves, but.
We have to check a certain amount of water service lines for the materials.
We live in the flood plain though, that's why I was asking, have you had anything to do with that or?
No.
They got the pumps down there?
Nope, it's just, this is all water system related, not floods or.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Yes, you do.
Did I hear a...
I'll support, we all support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried, thank you for attending.